Under that pursuant to Governor Baker's orders imposing strict limitation on the number of people in one place, we're doing this as a Zoom meeting. The means of connecting by video or by phone or published on the website and other places. We are recording and just a reminder that the recording is not an official public document. So we welcome everyone. The first couple of agenda items are a bunch of appointments and then an update from the Plumpton Police Department. Shall we do the appointments first?
Sure.
All right, so we have a list of appointments. Can we, can we, can we vote on these all as a group or we do them individually?
You can vote on them. I would do Madeline separate from the police department ones, but I would do the police ones as a group.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to Madeline Pompey be appointed senior clerk for permitting and planning.
You're muted, Chris.
Are you seconding Christine?
I second.
There it is. Any, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right. And the other are all police appointments. We can do this as a group, you think, Liz?
Sure, sure. I would just make note that Daniel Hoffman is retroactive to December 1st.
Okay.
The others were to take effect January 1st.
All right, so I'll make a motion that Daniel Hoffman be appointed acting sergeant, police department, retroactive to December 1st. Stephanie Connolly be appointed to special police officer of the police department, starting. When is that, January 1st?
Yeah, they're all, all the others are January 1st.
First, James Cranshaw, part-time police officer, police department, starting January 1st. And Matthew Torenzi, part-time police officer, police department, also starting January 1st. So do I hear a second before a call for discussion?
I'll second with a question. Are these appointments through the end of the fiscal year? Or are they annual appointments? Am I muted again?
They're through the, they're through the end of the fiscal year.
Gotcha.
Keeping in mind that there is that language in the contract, so they've been appointed for a year. They don't have to keep being reappointed.
Beautiful. Thank you, Liz.
Any other discussion? Then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Okay, that takes care of the appointments. So the next agenda item is an update on, from the Plumpton Police Department. And this is part of a series that we started a couple of months ago, inviting department heads, committee, commission chairs, and a chance to really just catch up and have some time together. And really intended to be a five or 10-minute discussion. And we're thrilled that you're with us, Matt, and glad to hear from you on how things are going.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to run through this in no particular order. I know I promised Liz I'd have my egg timer on for five minutes. As I can tend to ramble, I'll do my, I'll do my best stop laughing. So a couple of things, I'll start off with, from a budgetary standpoint, it's been a very difficult year for the police department. And we're already looking at means to sort of reel some of the costs, reel some of the costs in. I've been working with Chief Silver. We're looking at some of the various grant programs associated with COVID, because a good part of it is COVID-related. But it's been a very tough year for us. We've had a couple of long-term injury stints. So we're paying those, those officers. And then, of course, we're backfilling to make sure that their shifts are, continue to be filled. In addition to that, we, through our regional responsibilities, we were called upon to send officers to a number of the regional protests in the, in the wake of the George Floyd incident. So we had some obligations there. We fulfilled them. Your people were at, were all over the place, New Bedford, Brockton, Taunton, Wareham. The Plumpton Police were all over the place during that period of time. And then we, from a statewide standpoint, we had a readiness plan in place for the fallout of the election. And we had some standby for the first five days post-election. We had some officers that were assigned to regional response teams. And we're happy to report that that was, there was no response. And we eventually, once we got into that weekend and everything appeared that we were going to be okay, then it was a statewide decision through EOP, state police, and our organizations to stand down. But we did have some costs associated with that. And then we have a funny thing called COVID-19. And that has been problematic for everybody. But, you know, we have a very small department. We, and we have to stand up a 24/7, 365 patrol. And just like all your families, during the course of the year, I've had to put a number of officers. It seems like it's been constant. I've had a couple of 14-day quarantines. And then since then, we've had a number of additional ones where an officer is either, has been notified of some type of a contact. And we have to put them on the shelf for a period of time until such time as we get some testing, some testing back. And because of that, obviously, we have to backfill. We have to pay somebody to be there to answer those calls. So it's been a real tough year for us, you know, a very extraordinary year for a lot, not just COVID for us. There was obviously those other reasons also played a part. So we're working our way through that. We're looking at potential federal grants to maybe help ease that pain. But I will be keeping Liz in the FinCom up to date as to where we're at with that. I really don't have a solid projection quite yet as to what I think the shortfall is, but we're working on that. The townwide IT project, which I'm sort of keep an eye on for a few folks, where a lot of, a lot of progress to report there. We will have the, the new fiber network will finally be fully lit in all of the buildings by the end of this week. And with the hope is then, then we're going to very thoughtfully and methodically go through the process of cutting over various systems within town to the new, the new network. As an example, like the fire department, they're utilizing a Comcast phone service. So we really can't cut them over until the new phone system has been installed. Town hall, email system was another concern. So we're going to, the, the network will be lit at the end of this week. And then we're going to slowly start cutting things over. What's going to piggyback on that is going to be the, the new phone system. Been working with the technicians there. We have a, we've done a couple of sort of informational sessions with the department heads in town. And we're going to have a, a technical kickoff meeting with the engineers next week on that. And we're hoping to get that rolling by the, sometime in January. And we'll, we'll see where that goes. That's a, that's going to be a tremendous upgrade. And if you're not familiar with it, it's, we're going to have one phone system townwide. And we're going to get, you know, we're going to enjoy a lot of economies and efficiencies based on that. The accreditation program, even though it's been a kind of a miserable year with all these other things going on, we have not lost track of that. As you know, we are, our goal is to, is to attain a, I'm sorry, state certification. It's been delayed somewhat, obviously, because of the situation. But we actually have made some pretty decent progress. We're pretty close to being complete with a complete rewrite, revamp of the policies and procedures, rules and regulations. And once that's completed, then we're going to start prepping ourselves for the state audit. And, you know, it's kind of interesting that we took this on prior to the police reform movement. And now you can see that the bill that's on the governor's desk, police accreditation is now not going to be, it's not a voluntary process anymore. You will do it. So we were ahead of the curve there and will be, we're that much more ahead of the game than, than some other communities that haven't chosen to participate in the accreditation program prior to this. So that's moving along. I've attached Sergeant Terry and Officer Matt Hall. That's their program, working with me. And we're getting, they're doing a tremendous job. From an operational standpoint, one of the things that has been really remarkable to me is that in the last two months, we, we're up over close to 70 unemployment fraud cases in Plumpton alone. Do the per capita on that. It is an absolute epidemic. Cisco was hit pretty hard. They, they reported in with 20 cases of their own. But, and then Hubble had a number, but the bulk of those numbers are individual Plumpton residents that have reached out to us and made that report. And we're connecting the dots with the proper agencies there. But, you know, that's a, and, you know, each one of those cases requires some, an officer to put some time into it. So it's, that's been kind of a, an unusual situation. And they, they keep coming in as, you know, a couple more today. So it's a, I don't know when that's going to end. But know that that's been, been something of noteworthy for us for the last few months. The new Plumpton PD website, we've been working on that for several months. And I know it was actually, it was able to share the beta with Selectman Trainer at one point. He showed a little interest in that. And we, I anticipate going live with that in January. It's 99% done. It's going to give residents a bunch of different opportunities to sort of open up more lines of communication for us. We're going to have a tips ability there. And we're also going to have a sort of guided, if you want to ask a question, have a comment, concern, there'll be a process that'll sort of guide you through to make sure that that, that request gets timely to the right person at the police department. And grants, the, we continue to swing the bat. There, there hasn't been a whole lot of federal or state grant money targeted for law enforcement. But a couple did come our way. And we did receive a grant for the, it's a, it's a DOJ burn memorial grant. We received roughly half of what we had applied for, but it's essentially about a $20,000 award. It's going to help me secure some protective vests for some of the officers that don't. And we also are going to be acquiring a solar-powered trailer, trailer-mounted signboard. And that's one of the things that we have, a number of times in the last year or two, we actually borrowed signboards from other communities to post notices. The one I recall immediately was we had one, Hanson allowed us to borrow theirs. That was down at the transfer station to announce some, some COVID, COVID protocols. So we will now have our own. And so it'll be nice, solar-powered, nice little unit. And it also can be used for traffic enforcement. It also has radar capability. But, but for the most part, it's really for public notification. And we can pop it anywhere around town where we feel it's most effective. Then we also received the, the US DOJ traffic enforcement grant for, for 2021. And that provides funding for $11,000 to pay for the officers to participate in the various US DOT traffic safety campaigns. You have to click at a ticket and, you know, you drink, you drive, you lose, all those kinds of things. So it was nice, you know, nice to get a little shot in the arm, because it's been a while since we were able to, to get any, any decent amount of grant funding. And the last piece on grant funding, I'll say that our relationship with Duxbury and The Rock continues to be successful in that. I know sometimes all we see is that invoice, that annual fee. But I can tell you that, you know, and Chief Silver will also, he'll echo this, that we have through Duxbury's support incentive grant for the regional, they earmark a lot towards Plumpton. We've, we've done a complete rebuild of our radio infrastructure. And now there are this tech fiber program that we're finishing off. They were actually able to help us fund a portion of that. So it's all, it's all good news in that regard. And we're really getting a really good bang for the buck out of that, out of that relationship. I think if, if you asked Chief Silver and I to sit down and, and give you a number, a total number, what we think the last couple of years as to what the dollar figure is for the equipment that, and services that we have received through that, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be north of $100,000. So that, so we're, we're in good shape in that regard. So that's the quick rundown. My egg timer is ringing, so it's time to go. How did I do, Liz?
Matt, thank you so much. Any quick questions from Selectmen for Matt?
I would just ask you, Matt, to share the beta site with the other Selectmen and maybe John. And I was very impressed, very clean, very visually appealing.
I will, I'll, I'll email that out. Since, I don't know if you had an opportunity to go on it recently, but there's, in the last couple of days, there's been a little bit more work. We're going to have it done. We're going to have it done fairly shortly.
Great.
Matt, thanks so much. We so appreciate your professionalism and expertise and competence. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity. Everybody have a good night.
Thanks, Chief.
Take care.
So looking at the agenda, kind of down on the list is the potential solar energy project for Denit. If Jason is on mainly for that, maybe we could move that up and make efficient use of your time. If that's all right to everyone. All right, so this is, the agenda item is the letter of intent for the solar project at the Denit School. Shall I call on John Wilkinson to give the Selectmen kind of an overview of where we've gotten to on that?
You're muted, John. It's only my 10th hour of Zoom today. So, yeah, so this is, this is an opportunity that sort of, that sort of appeared very recently. Select Energy has put together a couple of options for a solar project at the Denit. As, as many of you will recall, or all of you may recall, we don't have a perfect roof at the Denit. And as a result, the, the project has to be perhaps a little more limited than, than what they had initially proposed. But I think we have a good, solid proposal now. It's, it's set up in, with a couple of different options. For rooftop solar, it's limited to the rear section of the building, the classroom section in the back that has a blue metal roof, being that that is not the roof. That is one of the, that is the probably only roof at the whole Denit that isn't have issues. So therefore, we'll, we'll look at that. And then the other thing that they've, they put in the, in the options was to do a canopy in the parking lot. Along with the, the panels on the back part of the school, there is, they split it into two options. One, without cutting down any trees. And the second, with cutting down trees. And so I had, I'm up there with the dog on Sunday and we just took a look around. And there's probably about 12 large pines that sit in the woods there that would, would need to come down as part of that, which of course, we, we would have to fund that. That said, with, with those trees, it's probably just as well to take them down, because they're within striking distance of the building as it is. And as we know, with really tall pine trees in Plumpton over the last few years, they like to come down pretty regularly. Sometimes all at once on one street. So, you know, this, this, it would probably be, probably be money well spent anyways. And the differential with respect to the amount that we would pay for the power is pretty significant between not cutting the trees and cutting the trees. Jason and I spent some time talking about this late last week. And we have not talked about it at the school committee yet. And then, before I go into that, let's see, this is the problem with 10 hours of Zoom meetings. The other piece is, is that they are, the Select Energy is operating on the current, they get a certain amount of tax credits. And those tax credits decrease year over year, at least as they currently are set. And so to be able to take advantage of the tax credits for this year, which is a 26%, we would need to sign a letter of intent by Tuesday, meaning a week from today. Meaning right after the, after the school committee meeting. If we don't, then the tax credits drop to 23%, which then has a slight impact on, on what we would pay for the power. So, you know, the best deal is to get something signed and to do that this year rather than the next year. If something goes bump in the night here, the world won't end. We're not talking about remarkable amounts, but that's sort of the thinking. And then again, we're talking about a letter of intent, which means that as we dig into this and they actually look at the roof, or they actually look, we look at the trees, or we, they re-crunch the numbers and they say, well, that's not, it's going to cost this much. Either one of us is the ability to back out of, of the deal. But in looking at it from, when Jason and I talked about it, and we also talked about it, Mark was, was part of a discussion as well. I, I think that, and this doesn't, this isn't relevant necessarily to the letter of intent, but we're probably more focused on putting panels on the roof of the building, on that section of the building, and taking down the trees than doing anything else. And part of that reason is that with the, with the panels in the parking lot, we would actually exceed, in the summer months, we would exceed the amount of power we're using at the Denit. And then you start getting into issues of if we can get a net metering agreement with Eversource, and that's a good thing. But if we can't get it, then we're paying for power more than what we're generating. It ends up becoming more complicated. Plus, you end up with other potential headaches of people not liking the big canopy and, and having to, we will, we will have to redo the parking lot if we were to do that anyways, because the parking lot's not in great shape. Probably have to do that at some point in the near future anyways. But it, it just doesn't seem, it seems like a diminishing return. We also pay more for the energy because it costs more to put that in. So this may be a really good opportunity to, to, to invest and learn, whereby we can put on the, on the back part of the building. We can get some good cost savings over, over time. And when we redo the roof in five to seven years at the Denit, we should have that in our minds as we're thinking when we redo the roof to make sure that it's ready to be able to accept panels. And I can't think of a better place to put panels in Plumpton for the town. Certainly not the townhouse, certainly not the police station or the town barn. I mean, this is right out in the open. It's away from people's views. And if they're sitting up on the flat roof, you're generally not going to see them anyways. And so if we learn with this and understand what this gets us, then we can, you know, look at that down the road. And the technology keeps getting better and better and better. So the panels that we, that you put on this year are not going to be as good as the ones that are available next year. And the costs are going down, the whole thing. So I think that's sort of where we're leaning. But from, from my perspective, not having spoken to the school committee yet, I don't see the harm in, in moving ahead with a letter of intent and see where, see where it takes us. So I'll stop just with that piece. And then I have one other piece that I just wanted to touch base on, but I wanted to stop there and see if anyone has questions. Particularly Christine, you haven't, you haven't had the opportunity to see much about this.
So John, then there is, we would be looking to do a net metering after, you know, we get things squared away?
Well, what, what we would actually be doing, yes, if we, if we just did the back roof of the Denit, we wouldn't need to do any net metering.
Okay.
We would agree to purchase the power that's generated from the house. Basically what we're doing, we're agreeing to purchase that power. Every bit of power that's generated, we would agree to purchase. The benefit there is that, one, it's, it's, it's 40 to 50% less than what we're paying today. So it's, it's a pretty decent discount if we take the trees down. Otherwise, it's about a quarter of the cost. And we'll never, and we'll, I mean, unless we drastically reduce the power consumption at the Denit, we'll never produce extra. Because this, I think at the peak, we'd produce about 60%, 50 to 60% of our power. So even, even in the summer months, we would still, and of course, we air-conditioned that building, especially in June and August. And so we use more power than two. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't run into that issue. The big issue that comes for some municipalities, if you're not with Eversource, is that a lot of the other places don't do net metering anymore. So you pay for that power. And you're buying it regardless, even if you're not using it. And then you get a credit, but then when the credit comes back, you're still paying more money because you're paying the utilities rate. So you still, you're still, you kind of lose money for excess power in that instance. Which is why, if we go down the road, in the, in the dream scenario, you redo the Denit roof and you put panels on there, we may want to look at doing something different whereby the town may be more actively involved in this, where we may, we may upfront the money for the panels and hire a company to help install and maintain, rather than having them buy all the equipment. Because they get all the credits and, you know, then it's our power. Whereas what we're doing now is we're going to be buying the power that's their power. They're just using our roof and we're getting a discount because of it.
So just a comment, I guess. I started out kind of skeptical about this. We started in on this as sort of just a flyer to see what this company had to say. And along the way, it has looked attractive. There was the concern of kind of leadership in the town. And John has been wonderful in taking the lead on understanding these issues. I have actually felt a little challenged about the trees. And, and also was challenged about this canopy thing over the parking lot, just as far as aesthetic. So I'm glad that that seems to be, or that we're thinking in terms of not doing that. In, in the big sense, it is so utterly clear that as a country and as a world, we need to be moving to electricity and away from fossil fuel. And this on top of the school, I think John's exactly right, that this is the exact place in town to be doing this on a lot of levels, not the least of which, in addition, that it is a school and that this becomes another educational and a teaching model. So particularly with the letter of intent not locking us into anything, I, I'm feeling strongly like it's worth at least taking the next step. There are plenty of hurdles and plenty of things that may still go wrong, but I'm in favor of moving forward.
Yeah, I would say we discussed this in some depth at the town properties committee. And we ended up fully supportive of where John's at.
Yep.
So maybe I'm going to make a motion, then there can be further discussion. But I'm going to make a motion that we vote to approve the letter of intent pending approval of the school committee next, next Monday night. I'm going to.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Just kind of a general question is, this would seem to really help our goals with the green communities. Will there be any benefit financially to, to the town for pursuing this?
Not specifically through green communities, but it would continue to keep Denit on the radar for that program. We received an extension on our last grant award through them, coming into a time with. And that during the winter season last year, it didn't seem like it made sense to do the boiler project at Denit. So we did receive that extension, so we'll be able to pursue that project. Ideally, I guess sometime over the summer, I'll communicate with John and Jason and Peter on that before we get moving. But it would go a long way, I think, just kind of in keeping the school on the radar as far as future projects.
And also Christine, on that point, I mean, and these are just projections and they're based on an anticipated 2% increase in utility costs and so on over time. But I think, I think the number, and I'm doing it from memory at this point, that, you know, you're in the 4 to 450,000 over. that, you know, you're, you're in the four to 450,000 over two, over 20 years of, of savings. So you're, you're upwards of, I think, 12, 12, 12,000 in the first few years per year of savings. And that's both from a, a power purchasing price, as well as a small amount of, you know, payment from the, from the, from select energy.
Thank you, John. Thank you. And Liz, thank you very much.
All right. So any other discussion before a vote, or John? Did you have something? No? Okay. So roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. So Mr. Wilhelmson, will you let us know about the vote next Monday night with the school committee? And if that is in a positive direction, we'll get this signed and move forward next Tuesday.
Perfect. And then the other piece I just wanted to mention is that as part of this, you notice on the agenda, it talks about Power Options. And this is a consortium, Massachusetts Consortium of municipalities and nonprofits that was actually set up, I guess, by the state with the deregulation of the, of the utilities way back then, and ended up being spun off and to its standalone organization. As part of, as part of this, if we were to move forward, we would need to become a member of that. We don't fully understand what that means yet. And I'm going to follow up on that tomorrow to sort of encourage the following up for us, because they're not getting back to us. And the perhaps potential benefits here is that not only do they do stuff in select energy, is there solicited by RFP provider for solar projects, but they also have a provider for natural gas. And there's an opportunity that we could, being a member, see some savings there for the buildings that utilize natural gas as well. So there's a fair amount of, there's actually, that's actually a little more, almost, almost a little more interesting because I didn't know about this and, and understanding it more is, is certainly on my radar screen. So we'll, we'll keep pushing on that to understand what, what that piece of the financial component would be and what other potential savings we could, we could get from that if it's, if it's possible.
John, on that, I noticed that the people from Power Options responded to us just a little while ago. Yeah, right as I was getting signed on for the meeting. So I'm happy to chase that down and follow up with them. And it sounded like we might be invited to attend a Zoom meeting with them or something. So I'll get some dates circulating that might work for that.
And, and who knows, for whatever reason, we can't do the solar, this still may be a good thing for us. So it's, it's, you know, not having known about it, I sort of feel, huh. But yeah, the more I looked into the, into the group and understood what they're, what they're doing, they're working with a lot of different communities around the state and helping to at least offset some of their utility costs. Good stuff.
Very good. We have been graced with Jason's presence this evening. Thank you so much. Okay, next agenda item, Award of Design Services for the Townhouse Entrance Accessibility Project. We are blessed with two members of the Town Properties Committee. Mr. Wilhelmson, are you going to introduce this?
Sure. You know, thanks, thanks to the, to the funds that Trainer was able to help, help solicit from the state. This is sort of where we, where we've ended up in going from a elevator or a lift to a sort of redesign of the entrances, which would allow for a ramp to provide access to the top floor of the old townhouse building. And the more that the Town Properties Committee looked at this, you know, we stopped just looking at the one entrance and kind of looked at that whole side of the building and said, geez, is there an opportunity here to one, provide access to the upper floor, but also to at least, at least get a whole design for that whole side of the building so that we have the best access possible? And one of the things that I think about with our existing main entrance is the trip hazard that we have there with those odd short steps. And I have seen a number of people head to the ground because of gravity there. And it would be nice to just sort of reimagine and make sure that we have the safest stability. So as part of that, we've, Liz has been working with us to get some estimates. We had had an initial estimate done at the beginning of, of, right, right before COVID, right? And, and then have continued to sort of push at this. And in talking with one of the architects, they sort of turned us on to this idea of a ramp instead of a mechanical structure, which I think has a number of benefits. Long story short, we've had a couple of estimates, and Liz could speak more to that. But at this point, Beta Group, who's working with us on this town campus plan, was able to come out and sort of take a look at everything and provided what the committee thought was a, was a very reasonable estimate to help come up with a couple of designs. And then to facilitate, you know, the process of design documents as well as bidding, depending on how much, how much the project will end up costing, whether it's below or above 50,000. So I think this is, I think this is a, this is really good. And I also think it's nice how it integrates with the work that they're doing with respect to the overall town campus. And that, that this is going to be an additive piece to that. And they, and we've had a good working relationship with them so far. So I'm kind of excited about it.
And I, I should make clear, the money for this came about through the initiative of John Trainer, working with Cathay and Natra to get this from the state. It feels like we're doing this exactly right and getting strong professional advice on how to proceed and in doing so, I think the project's gotten nicer and nicer along the way. So I'm going to make a motion that we do enter into this agreement with Beta Design Services. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, Christine, I'm stepping on you.
That's all right.
I won't do it again.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right. So we'll get those documents signed tomorrow and move forward. Very good. Okay, next is 2021 Annual License Renewals.
Oh, did we miss one?
We got the highway. Highway barn roof, I think.
Oh, yeah. Okay. You wanted to do that tonight?
I did, yes.
Very good.
We're on a roll.
All right. Liz, would you like to introduce that one?
Sure. So we entered into the sealed bid procurement process to procure the services of the highway barn roof replacement. We received three bids during our bid opening last week. And the low bidder was NEL Corporation based out of Middleton, Mass. And their bid came in at $105,875. Upon reviewing their bid documents and the specifications versus what they provided, it appears that they meet all of the requirements that were outlined in the bid package. And as such, I would recommend that the board vote to issue them essentially what will be a notice of intent to award letter. And that would be pending them providing us with the required insurance and bonding information. Once we have all of that, then we could put together the contract packages to be fully executed. So tonight would be the vote to send them a letter, a notice of intent to award, pending successful receipt of the required deliverables.
Did we get a sense of when they'd be able to do the work?
So as per the, the big documents, they're required to complete the work within 150 days from the official notice to proceed. So they have a few months, obviously, but, you know, I think a lot will depend on the weather and how everything kind of plays out, at least for the earlier part of the winter. Unfortunately, with it being the type of project that it is, you can't really start it and then stop it for any significant length of time. But it is possible that they could mobilize and get in there and do the reinforcement work to the Perlins. So kind of put in that additional structural support. And based on the weather permitting or not, then take off the roof and, and go from there. So there is some work that could definitely be done fairly early on.
I think the other thing that we need to just be aware of is that there's, there's still supply chain issues.
There are.
That was, I know that was one of the questions that, that Liz had gotten a couple of times about the amount of time that we had put in there. And I think we relaxed that a little bit, largely because, you know, they could want, they could want to start next week and get it all done. And they may not be able to get the roof panels until, you know, for three months. So you have a little bit of extra buffer to be able to make sure they can get everything on site. Because as, as I say, when you do a roof, you have to have everything there.
Right.
Make it off, unless you have a really big tarp. You know, you gotta, you gotta get things put back on pretty quickly.
Yeah, that was, that was a big part of it, honestly. Initially, we had talked about 90 days from the date of notice to proceed. Then we were talking about 120 days. And then I went back and forth with the contact who prepared the specs and the plans one more time. And, you know, it was 150 days. We don't want to set anybody up for failure. We just need the project to be done and done right, ideally as soon as possible, but within reason.
So in crafting a motion, Liz, is this going to be a letter of intent or a notice to proceed?
It's a letter of intent to award. In that letter, which I already have a draft of it prepared, we'll request their insurance and bond information, and then we'll go from there. You know what I'm thinking though, too? I would do this vote on its own to keep the record clean. But then you may want to take another vote right after this that just says, pending receipt of everything and assuming that everything looks acceptable to us and to town council as to manner and form, authorizing myself or a member of the board to execute the contract and the formal notice to proceed. Just with the holidays and COVID, I don't want this to get held up at all. If we have everything and we're ready to go, I think we should be able to do that.
So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the letter of intent to award as described by Liz. Was that a nod?
That's a second.
For those on the phone, there was a, a hand motion of approval. So a roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right, and I'm going to make another motion that we vote pending receipt of, with approval of the document or pending receiving all the appropriate documents from the company and, and review by town council that we authorize Liz and the chairman of the board to execute this contract.
You're muted.
I think I read the lips of Christine as a.
A second. My dog is yipping in the background, so I keep muting my.
Well, the dog can vote, we should have dog votes as well. That would be great.
Paulie says yes.
Yeah, all right. And Saul says yes, too, albeit he's quite asleep. He's nodding and asleep. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Okay. And now I guess we're on to 2021 Annual License Renewals. This is our annual chore of renewing Class Two and Three license renewals and also liquor license renewals. Bree has sent out the request for applications from everyone. As I understand it, she has been in contact with all the applicants, letting them know that there will be an informal inspection the week of December 14th. The goal is to get to the place that we can vote on these at our December 21st meeting, because presumably that'll be our last meeting for this year. And Bree, as I understand it, has made clear to all the applicants that they need to have a complete application and a successful inspection if they're going to be able to get voted on before the first of the year. And I will go ahead and do those inspections this year. They'll mainly be outside visual inspection of each property.
Thank you, Mark, for doing that.
Sure. And, and that's all about making sure the conditions of each application have been or will be, you know, what's the word, that they're fulfilling the conditions.
I appreciate that, Mark. Thank you.
Sure, glad to do it.
I do have, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Bree. I do have, most of the applications have been sent and I've received them. Albies, Angels, Carey, Auto, Motorsports, Plumton Cycles, Up into, which is the motorbike place that's on 106, across from the storage units. And the Plumton Convenience Store has also, I've received their liquor license. So I don't have many more.
Is the club in there, Bree?
Yes. Mr. Murphy is to, is going to be stopping by.
Okay.
Because he has been in, you know, the club is closed for a little while, so.
Yep.
He is supposed to be stopping by tomorrow.
Mike Tru, is, was he in there? I wasn't sure if I heard that.
Yes, Motorsports.
Okay, thank you.
Already done. And everybody has been notified.
All right, I'm, it appears that the, that Motorcycle Training Place is for sale. It looks like the property is for sale.
Really?
Yeah, I saw it on the Plumton Real Estate. So it might be worth an inquiry to find out what the plan is there, Bree, before we renew his license.
They came in and they did a change of name. So actually, it's same ownership, but they've changed the name. So they, they applied for a name change already with Section 5.
All right. Well, maybe I'll even reach out to him.
Backed out.
Oh, okay. But it looks like the whole property is for sale.
I think it was strictly that, but I can call him again tomorrow. He actually came to the townhouse.
Yeah, if you could find out what the intent is there, I think that would be helpful.
Sure, I'll call him tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anything else on licenses?
No, pretty much on board.
Thanks for your work on that, Bree.
Thank you, Bree.
So next is ratification of the appointment votes. At our last meeting, we voted to appoint Colleen Thompson as Director of Elder Affairs and Carolyn DiChristofano as an alternate for Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'm going to make a motion that we ratify those appointments this evening.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right, we are up to Town Administrator Update, including COVID-19.
Okay, so first, we do have some correspondence here. The first item, we received a $1,000 anonymous donation for the benefit of the Plumpton Public Library. We've also received numerous gift card donations for the grocery store. And these were graciously contributed by Dominique Sampson and Elizabeth Wesley, well as the Plumpton Congregational Church. And those are being made available to seniors in town. So Colleen Thompson is working with Bridgette and Jean Pacheco from the Council on Aging on distribution of. and Jean Pacheco from the Council on Aging on distribution of those. Okay, here, so let's see. We recently published the public notice that Constellation New Energy has been selected for the town's power supply program. All of the public notice information is posted on our website, and it has also been forwarded to the Plimpton Halifax Express to get that information out there. In a nutshell, it does not require any action on anyone's part. It's the same as the former program in that you wish to opt out, the instructions on how to do so are very clear. But otherwise, if you're in, you won't notice any changes to your electric bill, but it's just that different provider has been selected to commence in January. And I'm not sure, Mark, do you want to add anything to that?
Only, we committed to this, I think, about a year ago. And it's always a crapshoot on the length of the commitment and which commitment. It looks like so far we've won the bet and we have a good rate. These rates go up and down, ever source rates, but this is attractive. The key on this is, like all of this energy and solar, it can get very, very complex from our citizens' standpoint. They don't have to do anything. Anyone that wants to can opt out at any time. It's as simple as that. If people feel like they have a better deal or this is somehow something they don't want to do, that a coalition of towns group together getting a better rate. If that doesn't appeal to them, they absolutely positively with one phone call can opt out. The one other option involved is they have the option of 100% renewable at a slightly higher rate, but still less than ever source. And again, they can opt in and out of that at any point as well. So it really is a win-win, no-lose situation. I know sometimes people have a little bit of skepticism or concern about some kind of monolithic program. This one's pretty well constructed and people have plenty of options.
Also, as part of the update, the townhouse roof assessment that was supposed to be conducted today has been postponed again until next week. We are running into that time of the year where if the roof surface is a bit slippery from snow or ice or anything like that, unfortunately, they're not able to come out. So we're going to attempt to get this rescheduled sometime over the weekend. We're going to communicate and hope to pick a good date for next week that, for everyone. The signage came into the highway department for the speed zones that the board voted to create several meetings ago. Should be put up in place by the end of this week. And I think what we would want to emphasize to anyone who's kind of been following those projects is this is just the start of said projects. I think in the spring, we can go out there and reevaluate and maybe look to do some additional markings on the roadways, vegetation management and that sort of thing. But it seems like it's a step in the right direction anyway to get this signage up. So I know Rob is eager to get out there and get all of the signs placed.
I want to just, sorry, if I can just underscore that, I, the more I look around now that this issue's come up, there are a lot of creative things being done with paint on the roads to draw attention. Unfortunately, this project has gone slowly. We've pushed it as fast as we can. And we've gotten to the winter when we can't do a lot of those painting. But I'm excited in the spring about how cost effective it will be to do some really creative things on drawing attention to the safety zone. So as Liz said, this is just, this is the first piece of an ongoing bigger project.
We've also been working on some of the smaller grant projects that we have going on and getting some of those reimbursement requests put in. So we're working hard on our hazard mitigation plan update. We have another meeting scheduled for this coming Wednesday, so a week from tomorrow, to get back in touch with our consultants and see where that stands. But ideally, we have a completion date for that of, I'd say, somewhat early in 2021. The project itself has the ability to run all the way until August of 21. But ideally, we'd like to put it behind us as it makes us eligible for additional grant funding opportunities. So we want to get that updated plan fully completed and into FEMA's hands as soon as possible. The other thing that we've been publicizing quite a bit, but just to put it out there, effective on Monday, December 14th, until Monday, January 11th, we are rolling back our townhouse operations and reverting back to a remote setup. This was done by the emergency management team in conjunction with the Board of Health and a lot of consideration went into this decision. We were all very proud of the fact that we were able to reopen to the public so soon, comparatively speaking, looking at other places, that we were able to do so safely. But after looking at all of the numbers, the recent uptick in town, and even what's playing out, not just in the Commonwealth, but even on the national stage, it just seemed a bit irresponsible to continue business as usual with so much stuff happening. And as we were able to successfully before, everyone will be able to still conduct their business remotely. We'll make sure that all of those services are still provided seamlessly. And it's for a few weeks. Part of the rationale as well was people inevitably get together over the holidays. And aside from even our town employees, we also don't want to be putting people at risk who maybe are coming into the building to conduct business if they have sort of a false sense of security. To that said, everybody will be fully up and running remotely. There should not be any laps in services. And working this week on coming up with a way for the Council on Aging pantry to stay up and running. I think we're going to do an appointment only setup for that, but make it so that people still have access to those foods and those resources. Same thing, Council on Aging Transportation will still be up and running. Everything will still be up and running. The only difference is that the public isn't going to be able to come to the townhouse. And we will be asking staff who can work remotely to please do so. But it's a funny time of the year for us, too. We have a lot of end of the calendar year closeout things that need to happen. That tax classification hearing next week at then prompt some various forms of paperwork with DOR and everything. So there are going to be inevitably quite a few members of our townhouse staff that do need to physically be present in the building. But it seems to us like any, any small steps that we can take to contain this and not have a high-risk situation seem to be worth it. Again, it's temporary, and it's also giving us a chance to kind of press pause on things and reevaluate our protocols so that we can go into the new year and reopen and hopefully keep everybody healthy and safe. And that concludes my update.
Thank you, Liz.
On the COVID point, I thought I would just mention, so, you know, we have, across the district, we have, you know, a number of cases within the community that have been reported over, over time. Fortunately, they're getting to be more and more frequent. I think they're up into the 40s at this point throughout the district. So that's both at Silver Lake as well as in the communities. We did actually have our first case within the Denet community. Came in right after Thanksgiving. So, you know, there's a, you know, certainly we have a smaller community and a smaller school, but Denet is not, you know, is not immune to this, even though we like to think of Denet as being incredibly special. It's, it still is, but this is reality. But, you know, we have a number of protocols that, that we follow and that the nurse is following to make sure that the students in the school are as healthy as possible. And also to make sure that people have followed up on their, any quarantining that they need to do with respect to that. And so, you know, we're going to keep, we're going to keep plugging along here. And hopefully we make it right up to, right up to Christmas and everyone gets a good break to, to sort of, you know, unwind. And then we'll see, we'll see what the new year takes with us. But, you know, I think the, I think the, you know, the protocols that we have in place, the distancing that we require, the mask wearing for everybody is certainly helping. And, you know, based on a discussion I had this evening with some of the staff there, they said, you know, the kids are, the kids are doing a great job and they love the time there. So we're going to keep doing that as long as we can.
Thank you, John. So one question for agenda item for next time is who we might invite in for our, our chat as we've been doing over the last couple of months. How about wage and personnel?
Sure.
That was good.
All right, Liz, could you, could you invite in if
Yes.
chance that doesn't work out, we can talk about some, someone else along the way.
Okay, I was also going to reach out to Habitat for Humanity about coming in. Do you want me to see about them for the next meeting and also give them some of our January dates as well to pick from?
I think that'd be great.
When we schedule Habitat, could you let Colleen know? Because they do have some pretty interesting programs for seniors as well. Like, I can't remember if it's called the White Glove Program, where they're able to do some, some work on seniors' homes at, at cost. So it might be a program that we could promote through the COA.
Sure.
I would like to add, maybe we put the projects in priorities. We're a little over the two months that we talk about for the next agenda.
You want to do it the next agenda or the first agenda in January? I just, I, you know, things tending to wind down a little after the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Minutes, I guess we'll have to wait until next time. And I think that brings us up to selectmen rants and raves.
Well, I'll go first. John, I'm always like cutting you off. So I've got a couple of raves and it's basically town committees. The, the bylaw review committee, what an amazing job they're doing. I had the pleasure of meeting with them last week. And what a great group of very committed individuals that are looking at the big picture and, and trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the, the community. So that was really nice to participate with them and, and hats off to the, the amazing work they're doing. And then the Town Properties Committee, it's just, it's so nice to know that, you know, with all these projects that are coming in, that there's a group of people who are reviewing them and prioritizing. And John, with your leadership there, and what a great community or committee you have there as well. It's just, it really is, we've come such a long way. And, you know, when you reflect where we were and, and where we are now, it's, you know, people like John and our other volunteers that have really stepped up and kind of embraced ideas, concepts that, you know, we weren't really sure how they were going to work out, but they've made them work. So it's, thank you so much for all your time. You're, you're stretched so thin. And, and thank you, John, for your leadership on the multiple committees that you serve on.
I would, I would second that one for sure.
And, and I would note, I, I think, you know, and even that, yes, you know, I'm doing all this work, but I would say that I really appreciate that committee because being able to bring the solar question for the Denet there and get some additional input and another opportunity with a different group of people to sort of talk through, you know, what was being proposed and what was thought. I mean, I think it really, it helped me immensely from a school committee perspective to think about, think about how we should be thinking about it. And even, even though I play the dual roles, it, it, it's definitely useful. And I, I think as we continue to evolve this, it's, it's, it's really going to, going to help to, help to get us where we need to be.
I think too, your remarks, Christine, kind of solidify the building blocks we're putting in way, in place, like the bylaw committee, the town properties committee. These are things that'll live on for a long time. So I have a rave, and it follows kind of yours, Christine, in the sense of committees. The library trustees lost two people, Chris Boyle and Linda Lawson moved out of town, which leaves them with three vacancies. But two people have stepped up, Miranda Boyle-Pink. You may know her as Miranda Boyle before she got married. And Kathy Kestad, who just retired from the, the library staff, agreed to be a trustee. So we still need one opening filled, but they're doing great work.
And thank you, John. My rave is kind of the tenor of the time. So plenty of frustration and challenges out there everywhere. And I think we see it in town level and town government as well. But the rave is for the, in general, the patience and the heartfelt well wishes and that have gone along with these challenges and frustrations. And I'm especially looking forward to, as we get toward the holidays, things settling down and slowing down for all of us so that we can all take a little bit of breath and perspective and really appreciate the patience and the heartfelt well wishes. Okay, any last words from anyone? We made it through another meeting. We will be back, well, actually, we'll be back next Tuesday for a very brief meeting and then a regular meeting in two weeks. So thank you, everyone, and we'll see you soon.
Have a good one.
Good night. Thank you.